Thank you, and again, welcome. Any changes or additions to the agenda?
We have one revision, Your Honor. Item fifteen on the agenda needs to be amended to reflect the actual cost of the contract of thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars. That is the agenda item to hire the Lutiniya to complete eleven appraisals.
Okay, is that it?
That is all.
Any public comments? Anybody here to address this on any issues that are not on the agenda? We will entertain those comments at this time. Any written?
Just looking, we received none.
Okay, we'll move forward then. The public comments. We already did that. So consent agenda, the following items are considered non-controversial by staff and are recommended to be read and passed in one motion. Any councilperson, staff, citizen, or meeting attendee can request one or more items to be pulled from the consent agenda, and the add will be pulled and addressed immediately after the passage of the consent agenda. Otherwise, the following item will be passed in one motion. Number one, approve city council work session minutes from January third, twenty twenty-three. Number two, approve city council minutes from January third, twenty twenty-three. Number three, approve the payment of bills and finance report. Number four, approve providing compensation to Assistant Police Chief Matthew Meyer for his residual accrued comp time balance. Number five, accept utilities commission minutes from January fourth, twenty twenty-three. Number six, approve the Anderson Brothers Construction par- partial payment number four in the amount of two-hundred-twenty-one thousand eight-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars for the twenty-twenty-two trunk highway two-ten Eaglewood Drive railroad crossing improvements project. Number seven, approve the BNSF invoice nine zero two four five six six three in the amount of thirty-seven thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars and ninety-three cents for the twenty-twenty-two trunk highway two-ten Eaglewood Drive railroad crossing improvements project. Number eight, approve the BNSF invoice nine zero two four six two three three in the amount of three million seven-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, no, back up, three thousand seven-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars and twenty-four cents for the trunk highway two-ten Eaglewood Drive railroad crossing improvement project. So use two more zeros there. Number nine, approve the Tom's Backhoe change order number one in the agreed amount of five hundred dollars for the lift station number sixteen reconstruction project and increase the project budget from two-hundred-and-eighteen thousand seven-hundred-and-forty dollars to two-hundred-and-thirteen thousand two-hundred-and-forty dollars. Number ten, approve the Tom's Backhoe services partial payment number two in the amount of thirteen thousand one-hundred-and-fifteen dollars for the lift station number sixteen reconstruction project. Number eleven, approve the Witsit agreement for professional engineering services for the Evergreen Drive feasibility report in the not-to-exceed amount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars. Number twelve, authorize execution of annual advertising contract with the Rainer Dispatch. Number thirteen, accept the planning zoning commission meeting minutes from January tenth, twenty twenty-three. Number fourteen, adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero zero eight approving the preliminary and final plat to allow second addition to city center Baxter. Number fifteen, approve Billodania Appraisals Inc. contract for twenty twenty-three commercial and residential full depth reclamation improvements and quiet zone improvements project in the not-to-exceed amount of thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Number sixteen, adopt twenty twenty-three mileage reimbursement rate of sixty-five and a half cents per mile per IRS regulations.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion across.
Second.
Mr. Tabbett, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same side. Motion carries. No holdup items. Other business, number seventeen. The resolutions twenty twenty-three dash zero zero five, zero zero six, zero zero seven, head ordinance is twenty twenty-three zero zero one. Zero zero five, approving a solar array for Rainer Public Utilities located at seven-nine-three-three Highland Scenic Road.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is a request for a number of different applications. As the mayor pointed out, there's zoning amendments. That's part of the application tonight as well, preliminary and final plat, and two conditional use permits. I'm going to go through this as quickly as I can, but I wanted to just take a few minutes to overview the applications from the council this evening. So the subject site is Rainer Public Utilities. You can see the subject area of the site outlined in red and the surrounding properties with Mississippi River on the south side of the site and County Road forty-eight on the north side of the site. The preliminary plat is shown on this screen, and then the final plat is shown on the next screen. It's difficult to see on these two images, so I'll go back to the aerial photo, but essentially the preliminary and final plat is to take these internal lot lines, there's three subject properties on that site, and consolidate those three properties into one. In addition to that, there is also a rezoning request. I'll go over that in a few minutes. In terms of the improvements that are proposed, they're proposing a ground-mounted solar array. And the solar array lines of panels, if you will, are shown in the aerial photo here. So we're basically on the south side of the BPU property and a little bit on the east side where the treatment facility is currently located. You can see the solar array in that whiter color here. You can see the residential that's off to the east as well as to the southeast of the subject site with the river just off the corner on the southeast that wraps around off bottom of the screen on this image. This is a site plan zooming in just a little bit more to the solar array, so you can see these rows, if you will, and each row would have solar panels kind of along the rows in a north-south fashion. And then those solar panels rotate from east to west throughout the day to capture solar energy. There's some images showing what those look like and some pictured examples here. Here's another example. You can see the difference between them rotating one side versus midday, they'd be flat, and then rotating the opposite direction for the afternoon sun, and then rotating back to the point of beginning for the next day. Here's some pictured examples from the airport, so they've already done a project similar to this, and it's the same group that's helping with this project that helped with the airport project. And this is a graphic showing basically an individual dimension of the solar panels, so you can see the dimensions showing the height at the top and bottom of the panel at their angles. So I mentioned earlier, there is a rezoning with the application. The subject property has three different zoning districts on the property, well, actually four, but one of them is not in the request, so I'll kind of go over this a little bit. So the primary BPU treatment facility is in this blue shaded color, and you can kind of just see through the transparency here the treatment facility location. They also own land to the south all the way down to the river, so they have one parcel that's R one, which is the yellow color, and then they have another parcel here which has a split zoning, some office service and some R one on the property. They also own the triangular shaped property in the north portion of the site, which is Zone C one. And what they're proposing is to take all the property and with the plat consolidated all under one lot as shown here and change all of the zoning to public benefit, with the exception of the triangular shaped property on the north side. That's the former racket ball building site, which has been demoed, and right now it's a grassy site. At this time, BPU has no plans for the property. They just didn't want to include it in the plat and the rezoning. Looking at the zoning, we reviewed the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan does show all the property as public guiding, so the rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Also, in addition to the rezoning, there is a zoning ordinance amendment. Currently, the city does not permit solar arrays in zoning district, so the request is to add, change the ordinance for public benefit to allow ground-mounted solar arrays as a conditional use in the PB district. And this ordinance is, the ordinance has recommended by the planning commission, you can see there's a number of conditions that are associated with the proposed use, things like height of the systems, lighting, and we've got some setbacks requirements, screening requirements, signage fencing, reflectivity. One of the specific items discussed quite a bit at the planning commission was the setbacks. The planning commission added the second sentence to number, letter D here in terms of setbacks, which is a requirement that solar arrays and their enclosures shall be set back two-hundred feet from neighboring principal structures or one-hundred-and-fifty feet from property lines, whichever is the lesser required. Got some graphics here the applicant put together since the planning commission that just adds some of the setbacks in and how they sit in relation to neighboring properties. And so, looking at these dimensions, it looks like to the adjacent home to the east, we've got two-hundred-and-twenty-one feet to that house and to that easterly property line from the chain link fence, one-hundred-and-fifty-six feet. And then some other dimensions here, one-hundred-and-twenty-five feet from the chain link fence to the south private drive, which extends past Eagle Ridge Drive. And looking further south, we've got one-hundred-and-twenty-eight feet from the chain link fence to the private drive on the other end. So in looking at this solar array and how it sets up with the ordinance, the applicant is showing that they would comply with ordinance as drafted in terms of setbacks. Another item that was talked about quite a bit with, at the planning commission level was the screening. There is a requirement that a year-round screening of ninety percent opacity needs to be provided to have a ground-mounted solar array, and so that is in the ordinance. In addition, the planning commission added to the conditional use permit a condition that a buffer maintenance plan be developed and tied to the property so that the screening or the buffer screening plan can be reviewed for compliance with this ninety percent opacity requirement moving forward. Mentioned the preliminary and final plat. The city has requirements for preliminary and final plats, which the applicant is meeting, mainly lot area and width requirements. We also have requirements relating to things like park dedication, right-of-way and access. There's no new access, no park dedication required, and there's no additional right-of-way needed with the plat. In addition, the lot area and width is far in excess of what our requirements are. In terms of the conditional use permits, there's two conditional use permits being requested. One is for the solar array itself on this subject site, and the other conditional use permit is to allow grading within a shoreline overlay district. And so, just going through those a little bit here. The solar arrays proposed, the disturbance area to create the solar array is on seven acres, and the subject site in total was ninety-five acres. This is, as mentioned previously, would be on the south side of the site. The panels themselves would extend between nine foot six inches and twelve feet at their highest point off the ground, and so the grade would be smoothed out so that it'd be mostly flat and fully flat as they can adjust pole height so that they stay in that high range. Electrical cables would be underground, that's also in the ordinance. The applicant is proposing to secure the array with a six-foot-high chain link fence all the way around it for security reasons. Any lighting would be fully cut off in compliance with the ordinance, that's all in the resolution. And I mentioned the screening and buffer maintenance plan, that's all already attached in the conditions as well. The applicant is proposing a non-reflectivity system for the solar array, that's in the ordinance as well. The other conditional use permit is for grading in a shoreline overlay district. I mentioned the river is on the south side of the property, there is a shoreline overlay district that extends three-hundred feet up from the edge of the river, and the ordinance basically talks about best management practices for when you're grading in those sensitive areas to make sure that the river's protected for things like erosion, sediment control, things like that. And with the conditions in the resolution, the applicant would be required to meet all of those requirements prior to the city issuing permits to get started. Lastly, there are some conditional use permit amendment requests as part of this application. There was a, there is a conditional use permit from two thousand and seven approved and reported with the subject site. That, the way this is structured with the draft approvals in front of you this evening is that that two thousand and seven conditional use permit and all of its conditions would remain in effect unless specifically amended with this new conditional use permit. There's one in particular, there's three here that they're proposing to amend, but one in particular that relates back to the oh-seven approval, which is regarding sludge hauling, really relates back to the plant use, and they're asking for an amendment to the hours of operation allowing for sludge hauling on weekdays. It's a request to go before five-thirty a.m., and with the oh-seven approval, that was seven a.m., so allowing a little bit earlier start for sludge hauling. So that is one amendment to the oh-seven approval. And then there's a requirement related to grading plans and then the buffer maintenance plan as well. Planning Commission did recommend approval of the applications that are in front of you this evening. They did add four conditions. Those conditions related to the setbacks, as I just previously mentioned, the two-hundred feet from neighboring principal structures and one-hundred-and-fifty feet from lot lines. They required, the conditional use permit to require that the forest areas of the property be completed manually without machinery to prevent damage to the forest related to understory. That language was in a previous forest management plan announced in the conditional use permit itself if approved. And then the amended conditional use permit requires the buffer maintenance plan, as I previously mentioned. And then access restrictions are east of the PB zone portion of Rainer Public Utilities site and access restrictions to the south side of the site. One exception was for the existing access in the southwest corner of the site. Way on the west end, it's an existing access that's already there.
Can you clarify that except the one coming in off of the pressure?
Correct.
So it's, okay.
So that one is, was written up that that's exempt because it's existing. The other thing I would point out is the condition for the east of the site was for the PB zone property, meaning that they would still be allowed to maintain an access to the east from the triangular shaped property to the north because that's a county road to the north, and so the access preference for that property for wherever developed would be, here, I'll show you that. I'll go with Matt to show you that. So when you look at the zoning of the property, the existing access on the southwest side of the site is in this southwest corner towards Infisham, which is right here. And the other access restriction would be kind of, would be from, not kind of, from the red line south, sorry, my cursor disappeared, from the red line here south and along this side, there would be an access restriction up until this point because that's all the PB zone property. Removing that access restriction for this portion because this property, if it were ever developed separately, would need access to the east here rather than out to the county road. So that's how it was written out. And with that, the planning commission recommends approval with those added conditions. Happy to answer any questions. The applicants here, if you have any questions as well, Mayor, Council. Thank you.
Okay, Council, any questions? Josh, before he sits down. Applicants, have any comments, questions? See it, not vote.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to suggest that we take this in here for separate motions. That seemed to be an issue at the planning commission, that it was all wrapped up in one package, and when the initial motion was made for denial, they weren't given the option to break it into separate pieces because I feel that, in fact, I know the two commissioners would have voted the denial and the change of public benefit ordinance to allow the solar benefit there.
Okay. That's going to be my next question. You'll take one at a time. So we will do that. Make a motion to approve the preliminary and final plat?
Second.
Have a motion, the second, do we? We need a number there?
That's what resolution our ordinance is referenced in.
The record, so you know what we're voting on.
Mayor, Council, the preliminary and final plat is resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero zero six.
Zero zero six. Okay, I've got motion, the second on that. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Next one.
Make a motion to change the zoning from existing zoning to PB, whichever resolution that is, not including amendments to the zoning ordinance.
Mayor, Council, that ordinance is. So there's one ordinance that includes the rezoning and the amendments to PBE to allow solar arrays, and that ordinance is twenty twenty-three dash zero zero one. There's also a summary of that ordinance for evolution, publishing purposes, and that ordinance is twenty twenty-three zero zero five.
Okay, so repeat. Just a second. Repeat what that one's doing?
What's that?
What is that one doing?
The summary ordinance.
The three pieces or four?
The, the ordinance approving the rezoning and amendments to the zoning ordinance is twenty twenty-three zero zero one, so both are in that same ordinance. And then we also have a summary ordinance, which allows us under state laws, so we don't have to publish the entire ordinance, we can do a summary. So the summary ordinance relates to the main ordinance. So we've got zero zero one and zero zero five, if the council's inclined. Or you could take it separately. It's your choice.
Okay, so I've made a motion.
You can just go with the ordinance if you want. I don't want to make include the business, sorry.
To approve the zoning change but not approve the amendments to the zoning ordinance.
Okay. You can make that motion, we have both in the same ordinance.
I understand that.
That's fine.
Okay.
I just can't give you a resolution number, but they're combined, so.
Just for clarification, the motion that Councilmember Cross did is for the rezoning only, not the zoning text amendments. Just for clarity, for the, as council votes.
What was the second thing you said? It was for the?
It is, the motion made by Councilmember Cross is specifically for the rezoning of the property in question from the multiple zoning districts to public benefit or PB. It does not include what was in the resolution, which includes the text amendments that Director Doty had summarized earlier in his presentation.
Okay, I'm going to look stupid and ask one more time. Is this, is this including all other parcels or just the three amendments?
The three.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion. Everybody clear?
I think so.
Motion to second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both same side?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Then I'd like to make a motion to deny the zoning ordinance amendment to PB, to the amendments to the PB ordinance.
We have a motion. May I have a second? We have a second. We have a second. The motion dies. So, made another motion of some sort.
I move for approval of the amendment.
Second.
Motion, the second, approving the amendment. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have something to say. I think I've said it before about, I believe that the solar arrays of this magnitude are more of an industrial use that should be in an industrial area. I believe the planning commission had that if you would, when they did their initial vote or they made their initial motion.
Okay, I have a motion, the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Do we get them all? Josh, you have the conditional use permit.
I've got the, I've got the conditional uses yet.
Next is two, the two conditional uses. Get your resolution number here, man. Resolution twenty twenty-three zero zero seven.
Yeah, state it for us.
Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero zero seven approves the conditional use permits, which allows the solar arrays on the subject property and grading in a shoreline overlay district.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Motion, may, listen.
Second.
Mr. Tabbett, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same side? Motion carries.
One last resolution, Mayor. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero zero five is findings of fact for the ordinance.
Say that again.
Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero zero five is a resolution approving findings of fact for the ordinance.
Okay.
Move for approval of twenty twenty-three dash zero zero five.
Motion, the second.
Second.
Second, by the, let's see, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same side? Motion carries. Is that it?
That's it.
Oh, boy. All right, thank you. And we are moving to number eighteen, vacate a portion of Ironman Drive right-of-way and all of Jasper recorded right-of-way.
Mayor, Council, this is a request for a vacation, and this plat was on the consent agenda this evening, and so this is a follow-up where we're requesting a public hearing to vacate related to that plat. This is the subject property, and the hatched area is the vacated portion of the subject plat that's in front of me this evening, so requesting that council open the public hearing for vacation and then consider the resolution for it.
Any questions of staff on this? Move the public hearing at seven twenty-seven. Anybody here to address this? We see it not vote, close at a twenty-seven fifty, seven twenty-seven fifty, and bring it back for a motion.
Move to adopt twenty twenty-three dash zero zero nine.
Second.
Yeah, motion, the second, but unless there's any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Motion carries. It looks like we're done with that. Council comments, Connie?
To bounce off what Mark usually says about the motorcycles, just want people to be aware and alert for the snow sleds, snowmobilers, their out in abundance, good for them, but just guard watch.
Mr. Tabbett?
I have no comment today.
Mr. Crowds?
No comment.
And I have nothing. State administrator?
Just two items, Your Honor. First one is a reminder of two special meetings coming up. The first one is Thursday this week, is the interviews for the vacant council seat, and then Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, is the assessment hearing for Golden Drive Off-Road Project. And then second, just a chamber has announced its exit issues session, and it's scheduled for February third at Seminarity at Madden's Resort. If you have interest in attending, please let Kelly or I know, we'll get you registered.
Okay, anything from our turn?
We just have three items on which we'll vote a closed session for. One, I One item, closed session under Minnesota Statute thirteen D zero five subdivision three C for the purchase of real estate, parcel ID number is four zero zero eight zero five two four. Second closed session item is under Minnesota Statute thirteen D zero five subdivision three B, which is attorney-client privilege to discuss a claim arising under Minnesota Statute two nine nine eight point four six five. And then a final closed session item, which is under Statute thirteen D point zero three for labor negotiations.
Okay, I'd like for a motion to, during the regular session, I'm going to close.
Second.
My tabitha, this, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That was our regular meeting. We'll get to a closed session. Thank you.